All right, I'd like to call to order the Bloom Carroll Local School District Board of Education Meeting for April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Abbott?
Present.
Mrs. Bender? Mr. Bratton?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Sherman?
Present. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. There was no changes, right?
Yeah, no changes.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So.
Just a second. Motion made by Rod Johnson, seconded by Joe Abbott. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes. Any approval of the minutes from the March eleventh regular meeting? Anybody have any comments on that?
I looked around, I didn't see anything.
Same changes made, good to me.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Joe Abbott. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, what about the planning meeting minutes? Does anybody have any questions about those or comments about the minutes for that?
I went through them, they reflect the meeting, yeah.
Okay, I'll make this motion again.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Matt Brad. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, public participation. Do you want me to read the... Okay, all right, hi there. So for public participation, a citizen granted permission to address the board shall speak no longer than three minutes at one time except by consent of the majority of the board members present. A maximum of thirty minutes of public participation may be permitted in each meeting. The Bloom Carroll Board of Education policy requires that individual names not be used as part of a complaint or concern being stated to the board during the public participation part of the agenda. The board rests in its present the authority determining any remarks which may be defamatory, abusive, or otherwise cause undue interruption or interference with the orderly conduct of business. And we have Deb Sylvia, how you say that?
That's right.
Okay, great, hi. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to thank you all for the job that you're doing. My husband and I both have sat in the same seats and know how hard it is, so we appreciate what you're doing. I come first as Wyman's Memorial, I'm the executive director, I've been the executive director for a little over two years now, and just wanted to share our appreciation with the partnerships that we have and make sure that you're aware of those partnerships. If you've been in the area for decades, you know if you were a kid from Bloom, which hasn't been for quite some time, but if you were a Bloom kid, you got to go to Wagnalls for library. We still keep that up. We have an outreach specialist that does book bundles for the K-two, K-through-two teachers, and she's getting concerned that she's either going to have to buy a bigger vehicle or do something for transportation because the teachers really appreciate it. And then in third grade, the third graders come over for a field trip, they learn about our library and how we can support them with their reading objectives. Our library, our children's library is set up for AR, but our staff just recently went to the PLA conference, Public Library Association Conference, which is a national conference that was held in Columbus last week and learning lots of things about the science of reading so that we can partner with you and really help our students do a great job. Some other neat things that were happening with entertainment, we were thrilled to have the chamber singers come at Christmas time and sing, I think they really enjoyed it too, the community really liked having them come. And then in March, we had the Bloom Carroll Jazz Orchestra come, was a wonderful evening in the auditorium, and Mr. Falvo said the kids really had a great time because they got to play a full set, they had to play for an hour and not just a couple of songs here, a couple of songs there. So we really enjoyed it, we had a great time with them. And another neat thing that's coming up in the third partner in this project is Carol Cup. We're starting a middle grade book club in the afternoon, so for kids who live nearby and be walking home, they'll be doing a monthly book club. So we're really excited for that to get started and get going. And then lastly, came along with my business card, we collaborated with the Innovation Lab. Wagnalls will be celebrating their one-hundredth anniversary next year on Memorial Day, two thousand twenty-five. We're kicking it off this year, and the Innovation Lab is making all these wonderful incentive gifts and souvenirs that Wagnalls will sell. So that's our, one of the stickers that they made for us with our logo, and I hope you'll come around, and we have all kinds of great things happening at Wagnalls, and again, we're still happy to come over and partner with you. And that segues into, I'm also here as part of the Memorial Day Committee, and we're working on making our plans for Memorial Day. One of the things that we'd like to do is bring in the Buckeye Pedal Tractor Club to do the pedal tractor pools with kids, and they need a surface, and we were wondering if we could use the basketball court over, what are we calling that school now?
It's a preschool and learning center.
Yeah.
Historically, Bloom Elementary, then the intermediate school, and now the preschool and learning center.
There we go, that one.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's anything special I need to do to request that space and let you know that we would be there, but...
It's not going to be an issue, but just email me, and then I'll put you in touch with our activities coordinator who schedules in our facility scheduler, and we'll get that reserved, and we'll work with you to make sure that gets in care of.
Awesome, thank you. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We love our partnership, and let us know if there's anything we can do for Bloom Carroll.
Thank you for supporting us, that's awesome, our, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, but I know we don't interact much in public participation, but in terms of supporting Wagnalls, you know, we're fully committed to that, we're going to be, and if there's help with communication, we always put stuff in our newsletters, so make sure you reach out to us and let us know if there's some things that the kids could benefit from. We really value having Wagnalls in our district.
And one thing I didn't share is that, to make you all aware, one of the key pieces that we're trying to make our community know is we are not part of the Fairfield County District Library System, we are an independent associate library, public library of the state, so all of those tax dollars that you're paying on your property tax, none of that comes to Wagnalls. So we're working on, that is a huge objective for us to change that situation, but your support is greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
There were other updates, special education updates got moved to next month, and then the...
It says gifted.
And then gifted will be, special education gifted, we're supposed to be together.
Okay.
Special education got moved to next month, the events with the eclipse impacted their schedules and things, but the gifted update is an electronic update in the board packet that you can see. If you have any questions, please reach out to me, and I will get those from our gifted coordinator and get back to you, okay?
Sounds good. All right, seven, treasures, recommendations, and reports.
Okay, item A is approve the March financial statements for a total expense of ten million, seventy-sixty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, including seven point five-five million in consortium expenses within the executive summary for March, one of the highest revenue months of the year with our real estate and public utility tax collections coming in. The real estate portion was very close to estimates. The public utility collection, which we've talked about for the last couple of years, contained a delinquent tax payment, it was kind of a surprise, the county auditor was not really made aware of it from the Ohio Tax Commissioner about the settlement of the appeal between the Rockies Pipeline and again, the state of Ohio. We did receive a delinquent tax payment, you have the amount there, three hundred fifty-six thousand, a hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So obviously was not in our estimates because it's impossible to, you know, predict when these...
We've been waiting on that, though, right?
Right. That's the good news, because it's impossible to predict when these appeals are settled. But the preliminary information I've received, I've not received the exact details, is that, which is the way most of these appeals come out, it's somewhere in between where they were paying and what they are saying their pipeline is valued at. So it's good that we're getting a recoupment of the delinquent taxes because they were paying on the appeal value and not what the actual valuation was, but the actual value that they're going to pay on is going to be less than what it was when they were paying two or three years ago, so. That's why the public utility is going to be much more, not much more, but more than what we had estimated. Again, wasn't trying to be conservative, it's just really difficult to predict, you know, when these appeals are going to be settled. Expenditures are still running pretty well, a little timing on the purchase services. Once April is finished, we'll be pretty close to budget, I think, on our expenditures. So as of three thirty-one, twenty-four, carryover eleven point two-eight-one million, that'll drop, you know, as we get through here, but three months left in the fiscal year, and I'm happy with where we are financially. Any questions on the March financial statements?
All right, can we get a motion?
So.
Second.
Motion made by Matt Braden, seconded by Joe Abbott. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Item B is approve the general fund and permanent, sorry, permanent improvement fund capital expenditure budgets for fiscal twenty-five. The wish list, probably tired of saying this, but it's in your packet again. Mr. Hawn and myself met with the department heads and the building principals and really tried to prioritize the list. Again, this is just...
It's right here.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you go down, there's a spreadsheet in there.
Sorry. No, no problem. Again, this is the permanent improvement capital part of this, any personnel additions will have, be already been approved or are going to be approved in tonight's agenda under the superintendent's section of the agenda. As we went through here, again, we really tried to prioritize through safety, technology, again, obviously, we're trying to replenish our transportation fleet, again, just trying to really kind of reinvest back into the staff and the students. Mr. Bratton at the planning session brought up a good point in terms of coming back and determining and trying to show how much we're going to reinvest to cover, because if you remember, the initial wish list was quite a bit more than we had in the forecast. So if you look at line one twenty-five, again, it's on the attachment within your agenda, total versus forecasted, and again, we looked at this for, ever since the planning session, so we know it's over.
This is a revised version?
Yes.
This has already been pared down?
Yes. So we just, I just left the dollar amounts and those items that are being recommended for approval this evening. And if you look at the, again, line one twenty-five, two hundred twenty-six thousand and eighty-two dollars, and the way we kind of looked at this is in twofold, permanent improvement fund in the forecast was only two hundred thousand, and again, so I've said this over and over each year, it seems like, but we're trying to build that fund up, but you know, kind of hit some snags and hit some unexpected things that have not allowed us to do that. So a normal year of permanent improvement revenues, four hundred fifty thousand, so I think some of that can be absorbed in to the permanent improvement fund, and then the rest of that will be absorbed into our general fund carryover. Again, with that common theme of kind of investing, as we've gotten a little bit of a leeway and cushion here in our general fund, investing back into our staff and our students and personnel, so I think we feel comfortable with the list that we are recommending.
So this two twenty-six is going to be the additional PI funds that you were saving?
It'll be a combination of the permanent permanent fund and our general fund.
So we have the two hundred in the original forecast, and then it'll be another...
It'll be, I think, if I had to guess, probably another eighty to ninety in the permanent permanent fund, and the rest will be just an additional, within the general fund forecast.
Keep in mind what happened recently this winter with, we got hit by what you guys are about to possibly approve here in the next few minutes, the two roofing projects, this other primary school, you're looking at, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and then we've got, you know, thirty to forty thousand at the high school with the ag roof replacement, when we got hit this winter with the freeze and then unexpected leaks that, we have to take care of the facilities, and I think, you know, that's a large portion of this right now, but long term, I think we'll be okay, but on paper, you know, we trimmed a lot out of this, I think it was, you know, seven hundred thousand over, we got it down to two hundred and twenty thousand over, and you know, if revenue and expenditures hold tight like the...
Is the ag roof on here?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is the ag roof on here?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, part of the two hundred twenty-six thousand, two things that happened, the ag roof and the primary school roof add up to a hundred forty thousand of that cost that we were not expecting to have to replace.
Oh, there it is, I see it.
Yeah. So that's a large chunk.
Sixty percent of them.
Yeah. When we brought it to you, we showed you all the requests from every department, I think it was seven hundred thousand over, and we're down to the two hundred, but I think long term, if you look at our five-year forecast, I mean, we should be okay through next year and a couple of years after that.
Yeah, great. Appreciate it. I mean, half a million...
Yeah, good work.
And each department building was really well to work with and understandable and was able to...
I mean, everybody gets a little bit of something, they have to prioritize, but they don't get it all, you know, and we can't do that, we got to be conservative with what we're doing, and we stayed off the ballot for a long time because of that.
All right, it's good to me, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Matt Braden. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And segue into item C from the wish list, is approve the treasure to go out to bid for the high school area C roof replacement and primary school area A roof patch. Again, this was also in your packet from the planning session with the recommendation from Shore Architects, a complete tear-off in replacement for area C with the ag room and the high school, and then a patch with the primary school, which would also garner us a twenty-year warranty. It's approved, this will go out to bid on April twenty-ninth, and we brought it back to the board at the May board meeting for the successful bidder.
Will that happen this summer?
Yes.
We're not in a huge hurry because roofing contractors, it's going to, this isn't a huge job, so it's going to be tough to get people to bid on it.
Sure.
But if we have flexibility in the project, which means the high school has to get done and be done by August one.
Sure.
That's no brainer. But when you talk about the primary school over those classrooms right there, we're saying we need it to be done by like late October, so that'll allow, you know, contractors, subcontractors to take a look at that and say, hey, we got some flexibility on our schedule, we can do this in late August or September. That won't impact what we're doing here in these buildings right now.
Okay.
So if it can get done this summer, that would be great, but the schedule may push it into September, October.
All right. I'll make this motion.
Well, second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Joe Abbott. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Item D is approve the following pay indexes, we have one classified pay index effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, and number two administrative salary index effective August one, two thousand twenty-four, all of which are in your packet. There are three separate sheets for the classified index, just one for the administrative. I met with the, my finance committee, Mr. Bratton, Mr. Johnson in March, and we went through this in great detail. The way we got to the indexes that we are presenting you tonight are kind of twofold. First of all, we look at the base for each of these indexes, and we have decided on a three percent increase. This is the same increase that the teachers will be receiving next year through the negotiated agreement. The other part was a little more in-depth in that we looked at two things, the amount of steps within our classified and administrative pay index, and also, which is very helpful with the ESC, does an annual study, that we're able to kind of compare all of our classified, all of our administrative, all of our teaching classifications in a comparable manner within the other districts in the county. What we saw, again, especially within these classifications, was step zero, step five, step ten, we were very competitive, if not toward the top of the scale, but the further we got, that's step twenty, twenty-five, we just really fell off. And I think a lot of that was because not enough steps, A, and perhaps not enough within each step, steps weren't big enough. So if you look within the, within your packet, on the, I've highlighted the recommendations, and again, I went through this with my finance committee, adding step seventeen and twenty-five, again, they're highlighted there for the classified, which totals sixteen total steps for this index, and that's the exact same amount of steps that the teachers add. And this also helps, again, kind of those veteran staff that have been here a long time and really deserve it, quite frankly, pushes them up toward at least the middle, toward the top, not the very top, when we compare them to the rest of the county. And if you look at the administrative index, we added a step eleven. We also added two steps last year, but this also gives sixteen steps to our administration, and kind of, again, really gets them to the top, you know, in the middle, and then gets them to the average with our veteran staff, and I think it's a good investment with the three percent raise. And the three percent raise plus the additional steps are well within our forecast as well. So again, went through this in depth in March with my finance committee, and I think we're all comfortable with this recommendation tonight.
Awesome. Can I get a motion?
So.
Second.
Motion made by Matt Braden, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
And finally, we're thankful to recognize the following donations to the Bloom Carroll Local School District, we have two of them tonight. The first one is anonymous, and it was one thousand dollars to the school musical program. And number two, Rick Road A-plus Athletics donated six hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents to the high school resident team.
Awesome. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Matt Braden. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now old business. Okay, superintendents, recommendations, and reports.
All right, in your packet, you can see the document with the update for this month. Just obviously, I kind of let everybody know, I think it was Tuesday night, got a call pointed to my garage about nine-thirty, our maintenance supervisor wasn't sure if we'd be able to have school the next day. The slope on the back of the high school from Plum Road, there's a couple drains behind the back of the academic wing, and they were inundated with water, they couldn't hold the amount of water that was coming down Tuesday night. And, you know, I think in my eleven years here, probably four or five times, we've had water come into the IT office out into the hallway, it comes in by the ag classroom, by the hallway door, when that drain gets overwhelmed, and we had, you know, the hallway is flooded and muddy, the ag shop, thank goodness, had a drain, some of the water made it to, but with the amount of rain that came down, I think you saw the flooding and debris around the community and around central Ohio. It was just, we were in bad shape, but I just want to kind of update you on that. We got that night, maintenance crew got, worked through the night, got the high school pulled back together, we did operate on a two-hour delay on Wednesday, and then over at the preschool and learning center, the same thing, the playground behind the school is, it all slopes back towards a corner stairwell, there's a drain there, the capacity's not able to handle the amount of rain that we had, it backs up against the back of the building, it comes through old cracks, came in through underneath the door on the back of the building, flooded the classroom, the hallway, the office, that was a muddier mess than what we had at the high schools. That building was closed for two days, we, our maintenance staff brought, moved people over there to work on it, we brought in Surf Pro to work on it. I just really want to commend our maintenance department, Dennis Thompson and his entire team, they worked very hard to minimize the disruption, but it's a mess, you know, the gray just doesn't go away from the buildings, you know, sometimes we're going to have these issues, we were looking at, you know, trying to expand the drainage, but you're still tied into a very old line from the forties, you know? So you can make that catch basin bigger, but when the pipe's only four inches and it's full of water, water's going to go somewhere, you know? So just wanted to update you on that. Any questions or concerns about that? I've worked with the ESC, the other schools that have students in Prep for Success over there, they all were very understanding, so. Moving on, April in Ohio, April and May means Ohio State testing time for achievement testing, grades three through eight, math and reading, fifth grade and eighth grade have a science state assessment, and then at the high school, you have end-of-course exams that will be taking place starting next week. Just a reminder, the high school operates on a two-hour delay schedule on the days that communication has taken place, but those students enrolled in courses like English Language Arts Two or Sophomore English, Algebra One, Biology, US History, Government, the state conducts assessments that our students, I believe, will be ready for and traditionally have done very well, so that's coming up. The musical took place March twenty-first to the twenty-third, I thought it was outstanding, well done, very appropriate, just couldn't, could not be more proud of, you know, Mr. Yoder, all of our students, all the volunteers and other people that help, it's just great to see, you know, the level of performance, just really happy with it.
And the partnership with Mr. Falvo.
Yeah, yeah, the orchestra pit.
The adults that were in that, I think that's commendable too, I think that's awesome, it was awesome.
Yeah, and then the chamber singers took part in the Ohio Music Education Association Large Group Contest with the test on March sixteenth, and they received a rating of one, which is the highest award that you can receive, and that means they will qualify for the state competition, which takes place soon here in April. We had a really neat event, you know, we always have the science fair here at Bloom Carroll School District, and while we held on to the value of what takes place at the science fair in terms of the learning and the communication skills and presentation skills that students develop, the analytical thinking, the application, we just really value that, and a lot of places over the last twenty years I've seen, they've gone away from it, they've lost it, and I can sense that that need is coming back again across the state with the Ohio Academy of Science, and I'm glad that we kind of weathered that, and the reason why is because the Ohio Academy of Science wanted to showcase our Bloom Carroll Science Fair, and the CEO, Mike Oytak, came in, and we had several guests, Representative Miller, representative, or Senator Schaefer, Paul LaRue, the president of the State Board of Education was here, and it was great for them to see, along with a lot of volunteers, judges that have, you know, volunteered to work at our science fair showed up as well, but it was just a great, great day last week, last Wednesday, to kind of showcase our district, and our students presented and did their science fair projects again for them in a large group of people, and I think the state is maybe looking at modeling some of the district and state level competitions after what we're doing here now, so our kids gained a lot of valuable skills in terms of communication and presenting, and that's so important today, I don't, there's a lot of kids that, you know, and adults that aren't able to communicate with others, and those presentation skills are important, so really proud of our science department at the high school. Lacey Bachman is vice president of our FFA chapter, and she was chosen as a state finalist with a Small Animal Care Award. Top four students are being interviewed in this area, and she will find out her place at the Ohio FFA convention in May, so congratulations to Lacey. And then just kind of give you an update, you know, this past year, you know, there's laws that have been enacted in terms of conducting a screener for dyslexia, we've talked about that at planning sessions, I kept you informed about when that was going to take place and the data that went with that. We did a lot of our testing back in October for grades one, two, and three, which we were required to do this year, and I shared the data, our data looked very, very good compared to what was projected in terms of the percentage of kids that could be flagged for being at risk of having dyslexia. And with the kindergarten class, the law said that we needed to conduct a screener between January first of their kindergarten year and December thirty-first of first grade, and a lot of schools, you know, trying to decide when's the right time to do that dyslexia screener with the kindergarten class, and we felt like there was disadvantages of doing it early, meaning that like this month, for example, you know, towards the end of kindergarten, when we could wait and do it all the way up to December of first grade, but it's important, I think, that we have data to see after, you know, three-fourths of the year in terms of reading instruction for kindergarten students, which ones, and, you know, we're constantly assessing, we know which ones are struggling, there's typically not a lot of surprises when you do these types of screeners, but I wanted to share with you that we did proceed, we did do a kindergarten dyslexia screener, and we only had thirteen percent or twenty students that were identified to show possibly, you know, identify with a flag, being flagged for, it doesn't mean they are diagnosed with it, just means that there's reading difficulties, it could possibly be dyslexia, but I wanted to share that with you, and again, in third grade, we only had three percent or five students. Second grade, in the fall, we had a five percent, which was eight students, and then grade one, we had thirteen percent, which was twenty students. So all those students go into six weeks of intensive intervention and tier-two intervention, small group pullout from the regular classroom. And we're, we're going to be doing that intervention notification to the parents, for example, with the kindergarten students that we just screened as well. So we did that screener on March eighteenth, just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. So as we go into next year, it's only kindergarten that we will be required to do the screening. And then any student that moves in in grades one through six and within thirty days of their move in. And also any student that a parent or student or teacher expresses concern that they may have a reading, reading difficulty, that will be required to do those screeners as well. So I think that's it with my update. Any questions?
Just real quick, as far as the screener, so if a child comes from Fairfield Union.
Yeah.
Even though they've already possibly been screened, they got to do it again?
That's my understanding, yeah. Yeah, within thirty days, yeah.
Just kindergarten for next year?
No, great. Kindergarten will do the whole class.
Right.
In grades one through.
I mean, any new kids.
One through six.
One through six.
Yeah. Any questions? All right, let's move on to nine B under Students and Programs, just a couple of items here. Approve an overnight trip for the varsity cheerleading squad to attend the cheer camp at Ohio Northern University, July nineteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, to be chaperoned by our coaches Nikki Muscari and Cassie Mitchell. Number two, approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five middle school registration guide. Yeah, we've got a voting line, sorry.
Yep. I'll make this motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Joe Abbott. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, let's go on to nine C. Number one, approve the substitute list, number nine, for April two thousand twenty-four, as submitted by the Fairfield County ESC. Number two, approve the addition of one part-time, four nights, social studies ELA teacher at the middle school, effective with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This was part of the wish list items. And just a reminder, this allows a full-time staff member that is split right now between social studies and special education as an intervention specialist, will go all intervention specialist all day, which is where we needed some help looking at the caseloads for our middle school intervention specialists. And then that means we still have some sections, we need eight sections of social studies and ELA and some additional reading support with our middle school students. So that's what this position will do. And again, it's a four nights, part-time position, okay? Number three, approve the voluntary transfer of Leah Cheek from first grade teacher to kindergarten teacher, effective with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And that's to fill the vacancy created by the voluntary transfer of Erin Ricks to the reading specialist in grades three to five, three through five. Number four, approve the revised speech language pathologist job description. That's in your packet. Number five, approve the following request for FMLA leave of absence for up to sixty days for Amy Randalls, effective March nineteenth, and Denise Goff, effective March twenty-fifth. Number six, approve the following request for unpaid leave or dock days, as presented A through D in your agenda. Number seven, approve the following classified substitutes for the remainder of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for Brittany Walters as an aide and lunchroom monitor. Number eight, approve the employment of the following classified substitutes for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, because this is a consent agenda. I'm not going to read all these names, but for the aides and monitors under section A, as presented in your agenda, one through thirty-four. On the next, next page, section B for the cooks, as presented one through twelve. Section C, the custodian substitutes, as presented one through nine. Section D, school nurses, as presented one through eight. Section E, building secretary substitutes, as presented one through nineteen. Section F, bus aides, as presented one through sixteen. Section G, bus or van drivers, as presented one through thirty-one. And number nine, on the next page, approve the following athletic department supplemental contracts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements for Colby Best of seventh grade baseball and Barbara Hathaway, assistant boys tennis coach. Number ten, approve the following athletic department supplemental contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements, as presented in your agenda, A through D. Number eleven, approve the following athletic department volunteers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements for Derek Clappert, middle school baseball. And number twelve, approve the list of school volunteers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So voting line is.
Our voting line's back, two pages back.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Joe Abbott, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, number thirteen, approve the following request for an unpaid leave or dock day for Jamie Johnson, middle school guidance counselor, on April eighth, for a half day.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Matt Bratton. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm staying.
All right, let's move on to section D under Contracts and Agreements. Number one, approve the Student Protective Agency as the provider for student accident insurance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Number two, approve College Credit Plus Memorandum of Understanding with Columbus State Community College for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And number three, approve a lease agreement with the family YMCA of Lancaster and Fairfield County for school age before and after school care, effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, for three years. And that's what the YMCA agreement for the programs that we talked about at the planning session.
I'll make this motion.
Second.
Motion made by Jen Sherman, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Okay, under nine E Personnel Resignations and Retirements. Number one, accept the resignation of Kristen Neff, speech and language pathologist, effective at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Number two, accept the resignation of Brittany Walters, elementary school K to two lunchroom monitor, effective March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And number three, accept the resignation of Todd Holbrook, bus driver and high school lunchroom monitor, effective April second, two thousand twenty-four.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Matt Bratton, seconded by Joe Abbott. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
On to new business?
Yeah, it's back to you.
All right. Approve the following policies for our first reading. That would be the number one, IGVAR, the Reading Skills Assessment Intervention for the third grade reading guarantee. And two, the IGDJA, which is the drug testing of students in their plastic athletes. This is a first reading, we met what, last month, a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
So we met whatever these recommended changes. This is the first reading. Can we get a motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Rod Johnson, seconded by Joe Abbott. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, eleven, board reports. We have the facility, facility management.
Just the roofing that we worked on and the floods that we worked on, so.
When do we, do we have a meeting for that at any time? Like, is there a scheduled meeting for that?
For which, the flood?
For facility management, like, do you guys have designated times?
We talked about it, like, October redesigning, so go back and back and forth.
Yeah, we, we don't have one scheduled right now. We've kind of covered it at planning sessions, yeah.
And then personnel labor?
Mr. Bratton. Pay indexes.
Yeah.
OSBA?
No updates from that.
Policy, we just did, so that's done. Safety, health, and wellness.
That'll be May eighth at two thirty.
For Mrs. Bender and Mr. Abbott. And finance?
Updates, we just talked through them.
All right. B, upcoming PTO booster board of education meetings. April ninth, which is tomorrow, the music boosters will be meeting in the media center here, or at the high school at six thirty. April twenty-second and the twenty-third, we'll be having the kindergarten screening. April twenty-seventh is the junior, senior prom. May seventh is the elementary school PTO at five thirty in the elementary media center. And May thirteenth is the board of education meeting here in the middle school media center at six. Along with that same night, the athletic boosters is at seven in the middle school cafeteria. At this time, we're going to adjourn from regular session and go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Time is six forty. Thank you all for coming.
Motion.
Oh, I need a motion, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion, how's that?
Second.
Oh, well, Jen Sherman made the motion, seconded by Rod Johnson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
There we go. Thank you again for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Well, we just, we just came off a huge meeting, what, last week or last week? We had tons of discussion.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much. Scott, good to see you, thanks for coming.
A quick question, I know you're going to the executive session, so I'm just curious.
Do you substitute a hundred years?
You go through the Fairfield County ESC.
How many?
Is it like all day or what do you like, a half day?
It depends on the job. I just actually got a list myself, so there's probably a hundred jobs a day. You can choose schools.
I'd only choose this school, I don't.
You have to go through, it's, we, we partner with them for our substitutes, so they run everything, they do the background checks, all that stuff.
All right, and I can just choose?
Substitutes.
Yeah, yeah, what do you want to do?
We always need substitutes.
Bus driver?
Yeah, DM on. I'm a high-risk auto assurance person, so I don't.
Yeah, do you know where the ESC is over by, like, where you get your driver's license?
Yeah.
That, driver's license here, ESS, it's right here.
If you want to be a substitute teacher, you would register down there. All classified subpositions like that we just approved, the night, aides, monitors, secretaries, cooks, everything else, that goes through our district office. So substitute teachers are down there, but then we get a list and those people can go out to all the schools in the county after the board approves that list.
And that would be anywhere from all day to part of a day?
You can do half, half days, like, high school would be seven to ten thirty for a half day, or ten thirty to two, two thirty. And then, you know, elementary's like eight, eight thirty to eleven, or eleven to three thirty, I think.
All right, and then, let's see, background check, as long as I pass out, which would be easy.
Yeah, I mean, are you talking teaching?
Like a substitute teacher.